I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You threw me for a loop with the flag up there.
Right there.
Turned me back.
Of course I haven't.
Oh my goodness.
Go poke it through the sea. There you go. All right, our activity reports, mine's pretty brief, just one meeting and we have a flyer here, we had a meeting with the census people or census person, and we've got a flyer on that, and going to have in one of the upcoming agendas to form that authorize a complete committee, so if we could do that, and that should be what my article is in the paper if I got it in on time to meet the deadline, and that's my report, so we'll turn it over to council member LeBeau.
I attended the League's Experienced Officials Conference, and that is about it.
All right. Councilmember Hertzberg?
Public Works before this meeting.
Mm-hmm, all right, council member Sean?
I don't have anything to report, my meetings were all canceled due to our tropical weather.
Tropical weather, council member Land?
We had LMC Ex- Experienced Officials on the Park and Tree.
Park and Tree, all right, my conference is coming up here in a couple of weekends, so, all right, then we do have a couple department head reports, we'll start with Mr. Ludwig from the muni.
We'll just kind of go give you a quick review of last year in your council packet, where the final numbers for last year as far as the sales and things we look at, if you look at the front page, you'll see that our sales were up about 3.4%, or fifty, almost $51,000, while profit was up 3.6%, just a little over $12,000 for 2018. Again, the big drivers were beer, liquor, and wine, and you can see that they're substantially over the previous year, which is kind of what we're, we like to do, so, another positive, we're up, you know, almost 950 customers from the previous year, any time in a small town, we'll take that, that's, that's huge, that's really huge. The next page goes to our events that we held last year. The events, as we look at them year to year, we still, you know, we're averaging 70 some customers a month, of course, the big one drawing people in was a fundraiser we did for Jerry, and in September, and then we had a big one in December as well, so last year that helped us sell 75 cases of wine. The next page is the total of the last nine years of doing Wine Club, you know, almost 575 cases of wine and product we have sold, while having just over 5,900 customers attend our events, so, to be going this many years and to still have it that strong, very proud of our community, so, and we're drawing people from other communities as well. If you look at the next page, this is what we look at, is, or I've been analyzing the sales by hour of the total week, our biggest hours are, you know, 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. I thought maybe that could be driven because of Sundays open 11, you know, 11 to 6, but it's 11 to 6 is, we have broken it down Monday through Thursday, Friday and Saturday, we have two, three separate reports, and it follows pretty well the same, so, it's not just Sunday that's driving that category, so, again, all hands on deck during those, those times of the day, is kind of our goal, you can see 2017, you can see the comparison on the following page, and then we, again, we still look at our Sundays, you can see there's not much variance between those last few hours, two, three, four, and fives, you know, five o'clock dropping off $50, so, again, we will monitor that as, as we go, but it's just matter of fact anymore, it's just another day in the business, and we take a turn, and then it's just some kind of informational stuff, the top items, you can see, I've gone through most of them up or down, what they were the previous year, so it's just kind of interesting information to see what the trends are, to see if we're matching what other stores are doing, and of course, several things drive those categories, but it's kind of interesting to see what has grown, what has not, you know, is, is less than the previous year, and then if you look at the back page, the biggest category increases last year were, you know, the seltzer waters were up 50%, we were up 33% in bourbon last year, but we did sell a barrel, you know, that was 26 cases out of a barrel, so, that was kind of an interesting sale, so, that's just kind of the numbers I look at, we'll get more into that with my liquor board on Wednesday night, as I have more numbers for them, and kind of brings you up to speed, our, the auditor met us on January 2nd to go through our counts, and we found two mistakes out of the 50 things he counted, totaling $33, so, he, again, we were pleased with the count that staff was, and doing it in December, you always wonder if you're gonna have some big mess ups by the end of the year, but we did not, so, he was pleased with that. The 27th of February, I'll be heading to the Capitol to talk with our legislators about anything related to the liquor industry, and we'll have further reports for my liquor board and for you folks as we get closer to as well, and then we're hosting a wine sale today, tomorrow, and Wednesday, to get you or sweetie something before Valentine's Day, just in case you forgot, we have something that will fill that void, just come talk to me, so, that is my report unless you have any more questions.
Anybody have any questions for Bill? The, any feedback on that social media blitz on the?
Minnesota's For Choice? Um, we're, good and bad, a lot of people don't understand that if the C-stores get the products, that there'll be less to buy, so that's the word, getting that out, of course, it's, you hear the negative side as well, we want to be able to buy it wherever we want, whenever we want, and however we want, so, you'll see more advertisements come out as we go, but Minnesota's For Choice is a great website, I, I could be glad to email it to all of you, just so you could follow it, just to see what's going on, so, just kicked it off the, the end of last month, it's doing well, so, getting some good feedback.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, Mr. Mergan, your turn?
All right, thank you, first of all, planning for a number of spring activities, first of all, the spring cleanup and the household hazardous waste collection will be on April the 27th, again, from 8:00 a.m. till 11:00 a.m. out at the high school again. Compul site, tentatively, well, it's weather dependent, obviously, mid to the end of April, somewhere in there, and again, it will be $200 for commercial, and for residential, there is no charge, and it has worked out very well the last several years here. Water Festival will be on May the 3rd, and then the Park and Tree, first of all, the reservations, they are accepting reservations here at City Hall for Veterans Park and the gazebo park. At the Park and Tree Board, we had, we're planning a little sledding hill, and that is no longer in the works, the Park and Tree Board recommended not to proceed with that, as it would have costed us about $15,000 to $20,000, and they felt that that money could be better used on higher priority items, and that with the sledding hill, we can work with the golf course and killer hill up there, and that seems to work fine for years, so that will continue. And then also for the playground equipment that they talked about last year, we did set up a subcommittee to deal with that, so, they will continue to work on that. We're asking area residents, if you do have a sidewalk in front of your residence, to please keep that clean, that is an issue, we've had a number of people fall, so, we're asking you also, do you have a hydrant?
Yep.
Monitoring of your water, a lot of people are running their water if it is, and we ask it, it needs to be below the 40 degrees, so if it's 37, 38, yes, please start running your water then and let us know, but if it's at 40 degrees, I don't feel you're in any danger. Uh, let's see, electrical rate analysis is in our packet here, if anybody's got any questions on any of our electrical accounts, please let me know, take care of that, and also the airport fly-in, tentatively, we're August 11th yet, and the committee will be meeting on that early March, so, any questions?
Just on the fly-in, we're still looking for someone to handle the meal, or do, you know, for a fundraiser, whatever, some nonprofit group that's interested in that, so, any questions for Ron? All right, obviously a good report with no questions then, so, thank you very much. Then we have a consent agenda before us, which would be the minutes from those four meetings, on page one, the vouchers on page two, total 160,865.43, and then a request from, through the police department here, to send Officer Fred to Desert Snow Criminal Interdiction Training in July, and that's our consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by LeBeau to approve the consent agenda discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None, and that carried. All right, then, new business, first up, we have a request from the Corona Stuxton Limited for lawful gambling, LG 220 application for exempt permit, they're gonna have a raffle on April 11th and 12th at the American Legion Post 271 in conjunction with their banquet.
I'll make a motion to approve the Minnesota lawful gambling LG 220 application for exempt permit for the Corona Stuxton Limited to conduct a raffle on April 11th to 12th, 2019, American Legion Post 271.
I'll second.
Motion by Gilmore, seconded by Renkey, to approve that request, discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None, and that carried. The next item is a mortgage satisfaction from Leonard and Amy Gilmore, they paid off their EDA loan and a small cities loan, so we're looking to clear that up.
I'll move to approve the mortgage satisfaction by Leonard and Amy Gilmore.
I'll second.
Motion by Renkey, seconded by LeBeau to approve the mortgage satisfaction of Leonard and Amy Gilmore, discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None, one extension, all right, thank you, next item, item C, Minnesota State Lottery Retailer Contract for the liquor store, for motion to approve that for the coming period.
Is this something new, or have we had this in the past?
And it's an annual.
Okay, and it's been good for us?
Yes, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the Minnesota State Lottery Retailer Contract between the city of Paynesville and Minnesota State Lottery, and authorize the city administrator to sign the documents.
Second.
Motion by Gilmore, seconded by Hertzberg to approve the contract with Minnesota State Lottery and authorize the documents to be signed, discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None, and that carried, and sadly, we have a resignation from one of our firefighters, Zachary is, I always have a hard time with that last name.
Nadwinay.
Nadwinay?
Nadwinay.
Nadwinay, effective February 4th, so we're looking for two motions there.
I'll make the motion to accept the resignation of Zachary Nadwinay, firefighter, effective February 4th, 2019.
Second.
Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Hertzberg to accept the resignation of Zachary Nadwinay, firefighter, effective February 4th of this year, discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None, and that carried.
I'll move to authorize the process to create an eligibility list for the fire department.
I'll second.
Motion by Renkey, seconded by LeBeau to authorize the process to create an eligibility list for a fire department, discussion, hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None, that carried, and then some admin stuff here, transferring some funds around, anything you want to add to that?
This is, we kind of forgot to have the building inspector pay for his truck, so we owe, yeah, he owes water and sewer some money for the last two years, so.
He doesn't personally, but his, his department does.
His department does, so, we caught it, and Belinda has requested a transfer.
That's $1,320 for that to the, from Fund 121 to Fund 111.
I'll make the motion to transfer $1,320 for the 2018 Chevy Silverado from Fund 121, general capital improvement, to Funds 111, water equipment replacement, and 116 sewer equipment replacement for half of the cost of the 2018 Chevy Silverado, to be paid over a 10-year period starting in 2018, posted back to 12/31/18.
I'll second.
Would you repeat that, please?
It's here.
We, we do have a motion by LeBeau, seconded by Renkey, to approve that transfer, discussion?
In the future, this will be on your annual transfer.
Okay, anything else? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None, and that carried, and we're looking to have another annual safety training day, close City Hall on Monday, October 14th, which is Discover's Day, or Columbus Day, or Monday.
Make a motion to close City Hall on Monday, October 14th, 2019, for the annual employee safety training day.
I'll second that.
Motion by Gilmore, seconded by LeBeau, to close City Hall, Monday, October 14th, 2019, for annual employee safety training day, discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None, that carried, and the moment you've all been waiting for, moving into whole business, we have representatives from Northland Securities here to guide us through what would probably be our largest borrowing that the city's ever done, is that correct?
That, yes, that is very true.
All right, welcome.
Thank you, may I counsel, I'm Jackie Green, Northland Securities, and we do have a number of items that we're gonna cover tonight, Renee, any preference on my register? Okay, so I think what we'll do is we'll just do a quick overview of the 2019 Street Project first, I know that you spoke about that at your last council meeting, and there is some consensus there, we're going with option C, as far as how the storms were supporting the project, again, we gave you several scenarios, but that scenario C with looking at around 58% of all the storms were being assessed, and sanitary sewer at about 9%, excuse me, that's right, 9%, water being assessed at 40%, and then the street portion being assessed at 41%, the total there on the average levy support would be about $155,000 a year, I know on the staff report, the staff memo this evening, one of the items that staff would like councils to consider is how that assessment rate would be set, in the past, what the city has done is assessed 2% over the average rate on the bonds, and that's how we run those initial bonding scenarios for you, so, if there's any questions about how that's typically said, we follow your assessment policy, so if there's any changes that you'd like to consider now, we can certainly do that, typically, what we see is around 1.5 to 2% over the average interest rate on the bonds, just because the city is bonding for the entire portion of the project, and you're essentially carrying most funds, so that's why you're adding an additional interest rate to the assessment, so if there's any questions that you have about the assessment, we can certainly talk about that now, but otherwise, the structure that you have in front of you is a 15-year term, in the past, we have looked at 10-year terms, but because this is such a sizable project, we elected to go with a longer term, just to make it more affordable for citizens, and have less impact on the local. Any questions about the assessment?
No.
Okay.
None.
So then, I'm just going to hand out this calendar, so this is the proposed calendar for the issue of the bonds, just so we can know what to expect, what to have to come under when we approach the contract. So we'd be looking at kicking this off in April, with engaging the rating agency, that would begin around April 15, construction bids would be received on April 18, with the consideration for those bids for April 22nd, we hope to hold a rating call that same week, the ratings being received at the beginning of May, the awarding resolution would be sent to you about a week later, with the bond sale occurring in the beginning or mid, part of May, on May 13, we would take bids on your cap, and then we would bring that back to council for consideration at 6:00 p.m. that evening, and that would allow you to have bond proceeds available in the event, so as those first contractors are given start rolling, if you have those posts in the document. Any questions about the timeline, or if there's any want to shorten that up, or look that out at all?
No, looks helpful and reasonable.
So Renee, were you looking for a motion on the assessment rate, to set that at 2% over?
Yes.
We have three motions there that we are, are looking for, one would deal with whether or not it's a 15 or 20-year, and then the interest rate, and then the interest rate on the expansion project, so, it's on the?
Yeah, I would just, your honor, certainly.
It's on the, the middle one.
The first motion, where do you, this is set up for a 15-year, right?
Correct.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the first one's dealing with the public works facility, so.
Yeah, we're looking at, we're looking at this one here from the street project.
And that would be the street project and the storm water project.
And the recommended is 2%.
If it's helpful at all to average, the bond that is assumed to be around 3.35%, so that would be your assessment rate, 3.35%?
Can I make a motion to the industry in the 2019 Street Project at the 2%?
Motion by Gilmore, seconded by Renkey, to set the interest rate on the 2019 Street Project at 2%, discussion on that?
Your honor, that would be 2% above the bond.
Above the bond rate.
Thank you. So you said typically 1.5 to 2%?
Yes, in the past, the city has done 2%, so nothing out of it, nor what the city said.
Any other questions? None, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None, carried.
The second project that we'll talk about is the taxable sewer revenue bonds for AMPI for their project, so I understand that the council talked about this at the last meeting, and that the consensus was to move forward with a 15-year bond for this one as well, so this one's gonna be a little bit faster track than the improvement bonds for the street portion, as I understand that there is a quite large grant available from deed for this project, or deed requires that the funds are actually in hand for the city before they will allocate those dollars to the grant, and because there is, what, seven million or so that deed's got set aside for grants this year, we want to make sure that we're in the running and that those funds are allocated towards this project, so this would be happening about a month prior, so everything that is on the previous schedule, then we send it out. So with this schedule, what we'd be looking to do is start engaging S and P in about a month from now, so we would be looking to get those construction bids back the week of March 1st, and we'd be holding the rating call right after that, so this would occur prior to the set sale, this is a little bit out of the ordinary, but we're doing this just so that we can fast-track this project and make sure that we've got the proceeds so that deed's able to allocate that grant for the project, but this would mean that the resolution approving that set sale and approving those construction bids would occur on March 25th, the rating would be received about a week after that, the awarding resolution would be sent to the city at the beginning of April, we hold that bond sale on April 8, and that would allow for proceeds to come in by May 1st, so that should put us in a good position, being that we're starting this spring, those projects are starting to move, and that was proceeds on the S and P. So, with that, what we're looking to discuss is if the city is interested in charging AMPI an additional rate over what we've got set or proposed for the bonds, the average interest rate that we are looking at for a 15-year scenario, a taxable sewer bond, is 4.18%.
4.18?
Yep, my understanding is that in the past, AMPI has utilized city bonding, I think it was in 1999, and the city charged them an additional 1% over, so if you'd like to do that, whether that's done via development agreement or via assessment is within the purview of the city, so however you'd like to handle that, but just looking for some guidance from the council as to how you want to proceed with charging them something additional, if you'd like to do that.
If this is being pushed through a month before the city's bonding, is that going to affect the interest then on the street project bonding?
That's a great question, we don't know, so, when you go to the rating agency, they typically look at sewer or other utility debt as something that's self-supporting, but they don't do that until three years after the bonds are issued and it's proven to be self-supporting, in this case, because the city is working AMPI for, it's sort of a seasoned project, there's some comfort there that this has happened before, and they're coming back for some additional expansion dollars, so, there's a good chance that S and P looks at that favorably, but again, it is going to pick your debt ratios just because it is not considered self-supporting until three years after the issue, and then of course, we've got this larger street project coming up, so there is a chance that the city's rating is impacted, we just won't know until we get through it, every other time that you've gone through it, you've got positive marks, so we're hopeful that continues to be the trend, but unfortunately, it will crystal fall. That said, whatever the rates end up being, that's passed on to AMPI, so AMPI is meant to pay for this entirely, it's really been a matter of, does the city want to charge them something extra, because you are taking on the risk, this is a general obligation of the city, you will carry on the books, so if something were to happen, it's really up to the city to make sure that you're collecting it, and there of course will be a development agreement to protect the city, et cetera, but if something does happen to AMPI, it's hard to say what that will look like, but any impact on the rates would be reflected in the payments that AMPI would be making for the city.
This been part of the discussion with the AMPI?
This here has not.
Okay.
I guess when we get into working with the SIU, I guess that's, at that time, we would be, yes.
What's the, what's the, the level of risk that there's not grant dollars, I mean, is that, is that even a concern, or are we pretty confident that the grant dollars will be there when we?
Well, I mean, yeah, it's not guaranteed, there's no, you know, as we get going through this process, we'll have to refine the amounts, and once we're gonna go bond, we'll have to work with deed on, to see what their final determination's gonna be.
Well, you have to almost get the bonded funds before deed will make a determination, or?
Well, no, we would work with deed before they.
Okay, so deed will, deed will make a commitment one way or another before you've sold the bonds?
Yeah, that, you know, being that we have to have the match, I mean.
Yep, okay, as, when you were explaining it, it sounded like you had to have the money in your, in your wallet before they would.
And that is my, that was my understanding, Bill, that we, because they had told us that we had to either use our reserves and put that on loan, or go get a loan from the bank of the $2 million before they would give us the money from the grant.
Yeah, we, we do, we do have to show that we have the funds in hand, so, so they'll have to be in coordination with deed as we go through the bidding process and open bids and finalize the details.
So we got a little over a month and a half really to track, to work those out.
Would there be a good reason for not setting a 1% interest rate for this project?
Well, I suppose if you want, you know, you're not interested in that. I suppose if you want, you know, you're not interested in that, you know, that 1% revenue from AMPI cover.
Well, I'll make a motion to set the interest rate on the AMPI expansion project at 1%.
I'll second, though.
Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Hertzberg, to set the interest rate on the AMPI expansion project at a plus 1%. Any discussion on that specific motion, then?
I guess just going, going back to my previous question, is that 1% going to cover an increase in any interest rate that we may face then on the city bonding project? And if that's going to increase maybe by more than, you know, we're looking at 3.95 or 3.35 now, but if that goes up to four, that's a pretty big dent then in the city's pocket because of this. Maybe set it at 1% and if the city's, is going to go up by more than half a percentage point, then build that into the AMPI interest.
Can that be done?
I think it could be worked out in the development agreement.
Okay.
That we would have the information related to the rating prior to signing that development agreement. So I think we would need to work with, if that's going to be the case, but as long as the AMPI is alerted to the fact that there may be, you know, some negative impact to them should the rating drop a bit. My concern is that right now, the city is rated a double A minus. So if you were to drop by one notch, you'd be dropping down into the same A category. And that's a bit more of a drop than if you were a solid double A and dropping down to a double A minus. It's just a different category altogether. You know, it's probably a difference of five to 10 basis points, so it's not super substantive, but certainly something to be concerned about.
I guess my, my bigger concern would be if the AMPI project drops our rating and we end up with a higher interest rate, we're then charging the residents of the street improvement project 2% in addition to a higher rate because of this AMPI project. So I think I would be more inclined to want to adjust that one from 2%, maybe down to 1.5% as well if that were the case. I don't know. I mean, I don't think it's fair to the residents that they necessarily end up paying a higher interest rate on this because the city has bonded with AMPI first on a timeframe.
If we were to adjust down the percentage that the assessments were paying, that would ultimately, ultimately mean that the city's debt levy would go up. So in addition to those that are being assessed for the benefit of the improvement, it would also mean that residents as a whole of the city will pay more just because that debt levies will be increased. Not a huge amount again, it's only a half of a percentage, but just something to, to my.
Interesting, okay. Well, we do have a motion to set the interest rate on the AMPI expansion project at a plus 1%. Any other discussion, questions?
Um, what happens if there's some backlash from AMPI for that 1%?
Like I said, we have not discussed this with AMPI at this point. I guess it's something we will have to do.
And then deal with it then.
And there will be, you know, all this will have to be part of their new significant industrial user agreement, so they'll be, those terms would be specified in there as well.
Do you feel that it's like going to be a backlash?
For the 1%, you know, if, if this is what was in the previous agreement, I wouldn't see why it would be an issue, no.
Okay, I was just looking for some experience.
Anything else?
I guess if we can build in a buffer so that if the city's, is going to go up by more than maybe half a percent because of this, then maybe we can revisit the interest rate on the AMPI. I'd like to see that, just so that we know to address council member LeBeau's concern, we're not going to stick the citizens with something that we maybe can't foresee necessarily the entirety of. That's my biggest concern, just revisiting this if we drop too far.
I will amend my motion to include, however that looks like, to revisit this if it does affect our credit rating.
I have an idea, maybe if we can withdraw the motion, I can just rephrase it, or I can just give language.
Well, we've had a motion and a second, and so we should either, so that would be an amendment then, but that has not been seconded, so what we could do, if, if, we can vote down this, you know, if you withdrew that, we can vote this down.
If I withdraw the.
What you were just saying, adding on to your, because you.
I can't withdraw the motion at this point, though, because it's been.
No, because it's been.
Seconded.
All right.
Yep.
Well, I will withdraw my mo, or.
Your suggestion is what it was.
Yeah.
Yeah, it wasn't really a motion yet.
And I can offer an amendment, so that if the interest rate on the city's 2019 street project increases by greater than 0.5%, then any addition above 0.5% would be added on to the 1% interest paid by AMPI.
Did you get that, Jennifer?
No.
Okay, let's go one more time.
The amendment, the amendment that I'm offering is that if the AMPI expansion project increases the interest rate on the 2019 street project by greater than 0.5%, then anything over that 0.5% would be added on as interest to the AMPI expansion. For example, if the interest rate went up by a percentage point, then AMPI would get charged 1.5% instead of 1%.
But according to this schedule, we're not going to know that in time.
Yeah, because this, this schedule is faster than the, than the.
Like, we won't get the rating received back until after the closing on the bonds from AMPI.
Right, but I, but I think you could, you could incorporate similar language into the development agreement or, or the SIU agreement with AMPI that says the rate will be 1% above the bond unless, you could, I think you could incorporate similar language into the agreement with AMPI. I don't know how much they'll love it, but I, I think you could incorporate that in there to address that. It's, it's going to be hard, it's going to be hard to explain to them, but I, I mean, I get it, you know, you're, it's a significant amount of money that the city is committing to a project for AMPI, it benefits AMPI, and it's a opportunity, the, the city is losing an opportunity to do other things with that, with those same dollars, so, you know, I mean, I get it, and it could affect the cost to the citizens of a street improvement project. I think it's explainable, it's, it's complex, but it's.
Yes. The other thing that I would note here is that when we go through the rating process on the AMPI project, S and P will be aware of the fact that we're also going to be doing the street project in very short order, so they will be approaching this as a. Certainly can't say 100% that the rating that occurs a month after that would not be impacted or would be less, but if they're going to be assigning a long-term rating to the AMPI project because it is a general obligation of the city, it's likely that this, that same rating would follow to the street portions of the project. So they have all of that information upfront, they know what the city is essentially getting into with projects for the year, so they'll base their rating for the AMPI project on the fact that you are going to be issuing again in a month. So, and this is an aside, but essentially to give us a bit of a discount on the fact that you've got two ratings going on because it's done so quickly together, that second rating is really just a refresher to say, hey, has anything changed in the last month? They don't have to go through and do the ratios because they've already included that with that first review. So we should have a very good idea of where we stand after that first project.
Okay, so right now, as you had an amendment, but it has not been seconded, so.
Um, I'll second, can I second the amendment?
You sure can, then we have to vote on it.
So we're voting on the motion with the amendment?
No, we're voting on the amendment first.
Okay. Did you get all of that, Jennifer?
Yep, between 1 and 9, I don't have it.
Okay.
So you are seconding it?
I'm seconding the amendment.
Okay. Hang on, just one second here, and, okay, so we have an amendment, and if we could have that read back.
If the AMPI expansion project increases the street project interest, this is where I, I don't know for sure.
By greater than?
By more than 0.5%, then that be added to the AMPI interest from 1% to 1.5%.
And anything over that half a percent would be added back into AMPI's 1%.
Okay, got it.
It's all, is another point, it would be another point to add it on, correct?
Yep.
If it was another point, it'd be a half a point added on, is the way I understand it.
Yeah.
Yep.
I stand corrected. Okay, so that is the amendment, are we clear on that? Okay, we'll vote on that, all in favor of that amendment? If I was saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed, none, that carried. Okay, so now the original motion includes that it be the, the extra half.
1%.
Extra one for each half. No, extra, extra.
Just one above.
One above.
One above.
Or half.
One above the bond rating?
One above the bond rating. Anything else on the amended motion now? Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed, none, and that carried, okay.
Okay, so then the final project that we're going to talk about is the public works building that has been proposed for 2020. Got one more handle before you can save me. So as Renee and I were talking today, we thought it might be helpful to take a look at what the city has outstanding debt line total, so that as we're approaching this public works facility, we can look at what room we can have on the levy, what impact is that going to have on the levy going forward, so that we can start looking at terms, whether that's a 15 or a 20 year term. So what we're looking at here is that the total debt levy for the city right now is around $189,000. That's going to jump up to 196 and then stay around that $200,000 level. We are going to be adding the street project to that, but to kind of set aside that piece because we know that the street project's going to happen one way or another. We've got a 15 year option and a 20 year option for the public works facility. So when we look at the 15 year option, we've got an approximate principal interest that hits the net levy for the city of around $96,500. And you can see this on page 40 of your cap sheet. In comparison, if you were to push that out to 12 years, you've got a net levy impact of around $80,000. In this case, or I should say in both scenarios, you've got support coming from both the sewer and the water utilities to support that project, so one third from water, one third from sewer, and then one third coming from support on the debt levy. So in terms of looking at the total debt, we've got a few, a few years here where it's going to bump down a little bit, so after 2024, we've got some debt rolling off, so that frees up around $40,000 or so in capacity for the debt. And then after the 2026 payment, you'll see that that drops down again around $111,000. So that's really where you're getting some capacity within that debt levy. So when we're looking at taking on that public works facility in 2020, we want to take a look at what does that mean for the debt levy overall? So again, we've got around $96,500 on the 15 year term, and we've got around $80,000 or so on that 20 year term. Again, this is with current interest rates, we've got about a quarter of a percentage still of current fluctuation in market rates, but to give you an idea of where that would fall in terms of what hits the residents.
And I can do a few calculations. So if the council decides to do the street project and the public works building in 2020, that would be an additional $252,496.32 that would go on that, would go on the $199,849. With that increase, you would be looking at a 35% levy increase with both those projects.
That's in 2020.
It's in 2020. It, that's saying, everything stays the same as we have as of today in our budget. That would be a 35% increase. If you only did the street project, you would have a 22% levy increase. And your average over the last four years, you've averaged between 4% or 5% increase, which is, came out to approximately $27,230.50. So you're going to be looking for about $125,000 to permanently cut or bring in for just the street project.
Wait, we have left for sale one.
Hi, 14.
14.
Yeah, five, five on the Carolene and nine up in the Court. And then we have our property out at the.
At the airport.
Airport view. And then, and Rod, how much is the, and we do these projects every two years, do you recall, Tucker, Rod, how much in two years that next project is?
I believe the 2021 project is approximately 600, 650, so that's a fairly small project. Then we do have to remember the downtown project is fairly large again in 2023. I believe that's up over $3 million.
What are the, you know, and who knows, and it's kind of a rhetorical question, but, you know, the, the, the odds of selling the existing public works facilities that we would be vacating? Nobody knows.
The odds of selling them would be extremely good, but they're still not going to cover the type of.
Yeah, but I'm just looking for additional.
There would be some revenue there.
So I, I did, I don't know if, Jessica and I went over to see if there's any, anything in our debt that we can either refinance or that we could pay off early. We don't have anything that's available for that. Rod, were you able to run any water or sewer rates to see what the impact is going to be on them with the projects?
Oh, I think it was like 20 cents for the street project for the, this 2019, most of that is already budgeted, so for the public works building, it'd be about 20 cent increase.
And both sewer and water?
And the one item to note here is that what we've assumed in the scenarios just from the beginning of the discussion, of course, is that we, we level the principal interest. So this is really set up, like a car payment or a mortgage, just level principal interest throughout. You do have the ability to be more creative with infrastructure. State law allows you to pump out the principal, so you don't have to make the first principal payment until three years after the bonds are issued. So if it's, if it's a need that the public works facility is taken on sooner or later, and you want to be mindful of what that debt levy is, and kind of move some things out, you can sort of take post upon the principal. What that means, though, is that you end up paying more interest over time because you're not enterprising the debt, but you do have that option should you be going to move forward with the project.
So basically, we have about four or five years to sell some lot.
A lot of lots.
Can you look at your buildings for another?
Another year, year or two?
Do we need to act on public works?
No. It's not a timescale, schedule like these other...
Let's add that to our work session discussion a little further.
Okay. And it gets on there right now.
Okay. Sounds like a plan.
And we just want to give you guys these numbers so you can look at them and see what you think and...
Don't, don't need to do that first one there.
Well, that is all I have for you tonight, Mayor Council.
Thank you very much.
We begin in March. Maybe we see you at seven minutes for the next couple. If you've got any questions for me, I'd be happy to take them. I'll be right back. See you next time.
All right, thanks. You're right safe.
All right, then we'll move on down to item B, downtown snow removal ordinance and fee on page 45. And Mr. Mergen.
Thank you. This was presented at our previous meeting. Again, the map of the area that we're, this in discussion here or in issue is on the next page there. Remember, this does, or the fee does exclude single-family residents. Our policy, I believe, was started back in the early 90s when we started plowing the snow to the center of the street, and it is $1 a foot, and the recommendation is to go to 150 per foot. If we have any other questions or... Anybody?
I'll move to approve ordinance number three, the third series amending the ice and snow on public sidewalks.
I'll second.
Motion by Ranky, seconded by LeBeau to approve ordinance number three, third series amending the ice and snow on public sidewalks. Discussion on that. Hearing, none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? That carried.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution 2019-09 establishing fee for snow removal.
Second. Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Hertzberg to approve resolution 2019-09 establishing the fee for snow removal. Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? That carried. Okay, and then we're going to wait to hear from Medicom Lakedale or discussions about, you know, expanding that.
Yes.
Yep, okay. Okay, then to item C, airport hangar project on page 50, and it looks like we may be delaying that one again too.
On the, excuse me, yeah, for the airport hangar project, as the council may recall, last year we opened bids in June, I believe it was, for the hangar project. The bids came in high, so at that point we rejected the bids and decided that, at that point it was decided that the project would be rebid again this winter. Therefore, if the council wishes to move forward with that project, we'd get authorization tonight to proceed. We'd advertise for bids on the 20th, and then we would plan on opening bids on March 13th. As the council may recall, that this is a project where we'd utilize our federal entitlement funds at, for, at the airport as well as some state funding. The federal portion would be 90% of the cost, and the state would kick in 5%. So, given the timing of the grant process, we'd still want to get our grant until this August, September timeframe, so I wouldn't anticipate construction starting until later this fall.
Okay. I'll make the motion to approve the airport hangar plans and authorize advertisement for bids.
I'll second.
Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by LeBeau to approve the airport hangar plans and authorize advertisement for bids, and then we'll see if all those come in. Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? That carried. Everybody checked their calendars to see when we can have a meeting in regards to our downtown revitalization and redevelopment effort for a joint city council and EDA 26th is out for me. 28th is out for me.
I can't do the 12th.
You can't do the 19th.
You can't do the 19th?
I can't do the 21st.
Are you getting all these just so we can't?
They're all out.
They're all out.
They're all done.
My suggestion is we pick a, pick a date and...
Well, go with the 28th because I, it would be really, really close. I'll be in St. Cloud all day, but...
Are you on the downtown committee?
Yes.
Yes.
So the 28th out, I should, I might be a little late.
If that works for everybody else, if I'm the one...
No, Thursdays don't work for me.
Thursdays don't work for you?
Sure do.
You can't take all the Thursdays, dude.
No. We got a shortage of help for bingo.
And...
What about the...
Tuesdays could work, but I, could we go out like 7:00 instead of 5:30? Is there a reason for meeting early?
We were going to go walk around downtown before it gets dark.
Be lighter by then.
Or June, or May, or August.
Well, you know, we don't want to...
And they can meet at 8:00.
We don't want to, don't want to go too far out. Too far out, you know, this is somewhat, somewhat important, it's not vital, but it's important.
How many can't make the 12th?
I can't.
How about 19th? How many couldn't?
I won't be here. The 19th and the 21st, I have MCFOA conference in St. Cloud. I can try to be back by 5:30.
What about the 26th?
You said 26th is 5:30.
Your honor, could, could they do the downtown at 5:30 and then everybody get together at 7:00?
Sure. If that works, if that's acceptable to everybody.
You know, they probably don't all need to do the walk. Yeah, I've been downtown before.
We're going to play that song, you do the walk.
So then what day are we looking at?
Oh, no, the Thursday, would the 28th work for you, Neil?
At 7:00.
Oh, yeah, bingo.
Thursdays aren't good.
Thursdays aren't good, so, so we're up to the 12th, 19th, or the 26th.
And I could make any of them work.
I can make the 19th work.
The 19th would probably be the best for me.
The 19th isn't, I can do it. I'll, I'll be here, depending on traffic out of St. Paul, I might be late, but I'll be here.
Take one for the team.
Well, it's, you're going to do the business at 7:00?
Or 6:30 or what we say?
So 5:30 tour?
Mm-hmm. And 7:00 meeting? Is 7:00 o'clock reasonable based on average travel time?
I should be able to make it by 5:30. I'll be here by 7:00 for sure.
7:00 for sure. Okay, so we'll do the walkthrough at 5:30, and then we'll set the meeting for 7:00? You have a motion for that? No. We'll just set...
That is on the 26th.
On the 20...
19th.
19th.
19th. Yep, we'll just call a meeting.
Oh, let's work for the EDP board, the ones that could come, come.
Well, this is what we're going to have to tell them.
So we're going to, we're going to set the motion.
There's another five guys on that, you're not going to find a day.
Okay, we'll have a motion. Renee wants a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to set the special joint city council EDP board meeting for the 19th of March at 5:30 PM for a tour downtown and 7:00 PM for a meeting.
Second. Motion by Gilmore, seconded by Ranky to set that joint meeting for Tuesday, March 19th. 5:30 walkthrough, 7:00 meeting here at City Hall.
Do we have a discussion, working council meeting on the 19th?
No, that's in...
We have one this month, on the 19th.
So my calendar is wrong?
Yeah, February 19th.
February 19th.
February 19th.
Wrong one. I'll fix it.
And Chuck, do you think this will work for Jana?
Yeah, we will make sure it works.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? All right, that's it for business. We have the police department report for January, the notice from the Minnesota Department of Health, our final approval of our wellhead protection plan amendment has come through. Thank you from the Historical Society for our continued report. Electrical billing analysis Ron referred to, notice from the Highway 23 Coalition there, they're active and they're not rolling over now that they've got the schedule for the two sections here. They're looking out and beyond, it's nice to see. The liquor store report that Bill mentioned, and then the notice of all the reports that can be found on the city's website. And that, we're done, we're adjourned. Thank you very much.
You need to go over this week?
This week? No.
Oh, because we got one of the viewers.